Evening. We'll now call the June 24th, 2021 Regular School Board Meeting into session. I'll have Dr. Whitaker give us a moment of silence and the pledge allegiance and admission statement afterwards.
The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible service.
Thank you, Dr. Whitaker. Agenda item 2.5 is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Hines. Mr. Parent.
Here.
Mrs. Schumay. Mrs. Thomas. Mr. Tillich.
Here.
Dr. Whitaker.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mrs. Thomas is now here. And Ms. Atkinson.
Here.
We have six members present, so we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Agenda item 2.6 is the approval of the agenda for June 24th, 2021.
Move for approval.
Thank you. Roll call vote.
Mr. Parent.
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas.
Yes.
Mr. Tillich.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson.
Yes. Thank you. Agenda item 3.1 is a closed session, but I'll ask the board members, do anyone have any questions regarding the transaction report? All right. So we will not be going into close. Our next agenda item is 4.1. Madam Clerk, do we have any non-agenda item speakers?
Yes, we do.
All right. Thank you.
The Portsmouth City School Board is always interested in hearing from the citizens of its community. If you have registered to speak prior to this meeting, the clerk will call your name when it is your turn to address the school board. When speaking, please keep your comments focused on issues that are of general interest to the school division and the community. This public comment period is for non-agenda items only. Due to the length of our meetings, the school board requires that you keep your comments to five minutes. An additional few minutes may be granted by the chairman. Our first speaker is Ms. Kathy Garrett from Chesapeake, Virginia. I assume she's not here, then we have Erin Jewett.
Good evening. My name is Erin Jewett, and my son, who is autistic and ADHD, has attended Portsmouth schools for the past eight years. He's only 10, if that gives you an idea of the sheer magnitude of the influence of Portsmouth on his life, and I'm here today because I want to make everyone aware of what's happening to students with disabilities in this district. In October of 2014, when he was three, our son wandered out of Churchland Preschool at the end of the day. Multiple adults saw him and did nothing. He made it about a mile into the Maryfields neighborhood. I wasn't called. The police weren't called. I wouldn't wish the way I felt during that hour and a half after I arrived to pick him up on anyone in this world, wondering if we'd ever see him again or if he was scared. He was only found because two people in that neighborhood thought it was odd to see a child so small by himself and took him to an officer who lived nearby. When we asked to see the camera footage, we were told the cameras at the school were not functional. That was a lie. It was only by making repeated calls to the school board that we were told they did, in fact, work. We also found out that the acting superintendent at the time hadn't even been informed about the incident. Being a teacher myself, I chose not to try to punish the school district. We didn't go to the news or lawyers or file any complaints. I regret that decision every day because now while the district gets to pretend it never happened, we have never been the same and things didn't get better from there. In kindergarten, he did not have a special education teacher for three months. His minutes were not remotely met. Without our consent, Portsmouth effectively created a change in placement for him. These are both serious violations of special education law, and again, I didn't file a complaint. In first grade, he started the year a joyful, silly, busy little boy with a love of learning and people. Within two months, he had stopped smiling entirely. One day, I just realized that I hadn't heard him laugh in ages. He became explosive at school. He stopped doing work. He stopped wanting to go to recess. He stopped wanting to interact with other students. He couldn't even make it an hour at school by January. He withdrew until he was unrecognizable. When we met with the school to discuss what was happening, they had met about him prior to our meeting. They left posters on the wall where they listed things about him. Every word on those papers was negative. They had things like defiant, violent, aggressive, manipulative, disruptive, and rude. He was seven years old. In the end, the cause of his behaviors was a cry for help. He was in a room with teachers who obviously didn't like him, who didn't listen to his beloved one-on-one aide, who would refuse training on working with autistic students, who spoke poorly about him in front of him, thinking he wouldn't hear. He was later diagnosed with PTSD and anxiety directly as a result of his experience in the classroom, something we've had to work for two years to build him back from. He has made zero progress on any of his academic goals in the three years since this began. By March of 2020, his mental health had spiraled out of control. School staff requested almost daily that my husband come pick him up, essentially suspending him without manifestation, another clear violation of special education law. We met with his entire IEP team, including the head of special education. She left the meeting, then called back in to suggest that we send our son to Rivermont, so the district suggested the most restrictive environment without doing any of the multitude of things required to show that this was necessary. In fact, they said they didn't have the proper sensory equipment at the school level to accommodate him because of unnamed logistical reasons. And beyond that, they suggested a school that in 2018 was cited by the state for not having proper training for their staff, as well as having seclusion rooms that the staff called the box. Through all of this, again, we did not file a complaint. The only request I have made beyond creating an IEP that works for him is to have his therapist, with whom he's made tremendous progress, do a training with the staff that would be working with him next year. It was denied. Portsmouth doesn't feel responsible for the very issue they created with their arrogance, defensiveness, and lack of care. So we're doing what we should have done long ago. We're moving to another district. We're choosing our son, his smile and his laugh and his future. We should have listened when numerous attorneys, advocates, administrators, and other teachers told us, oh, we're sorry, when we said that our son went to school in Portsmouth, a school system I used to defend when he was in preschool. But that's the reputation of this district. So in the end, Portsmouth wins when they shouldn't. They win by running out another family of a child with special needs because we're not the first. They win because they will continue to not be held accountable as a district for what they've done, but I will, from this point forward, tell every other family of a child with disabilities in this district, if you reach a moment in time when you're wondering if you should go to the news, do it. If you're wondering if you should get an advocate, please do it. If you're wondering if you should get a lawyer, do it. If you're wondering if you should go to due process or file a state complaint for an investigation, please do it. Give no quarter. Don't give second chances because in the end Portsmouth schools will take advantage of your grace. They will run out the statute of limitations, and they will make the same mistake again and again and again, and it will be your child, like mine, that pays the price. And if you can, move away. Our son deserved better. All kids do, and as a teacher, I know that most of all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jewett, and as a board, we value the opinions of our parents. I can assure you that someone from Dr. Bracy or his team will still like to contact you. So thank you. Any other speakers, Madam Chair?
No, there are no others. Thank you.
Agenda item 4.2 is a public comment for board agenda items. Any speakers?
No.
Thank you. Agenda items 5.1 and 5.6 is our consent agenda items. Do I have a motion?
I shall move.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Parent.
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas.
Yes.
Mr. Tillich.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mrs. Atkinson.
Yes. Thank you. Agenda item 6.1 is our student representative report. Mr. Miles Hunt?
Good evening, Chair Atkinson, Dr. Bracy, Vice Chair Atkinson, Dr. Bracy, and school board members. It has been an honor to serve and represent the students of Portsmouth Public Schools for the 2020-2021 school year. A year ago, no one would have imagined under what circumstances today's learners would continue their education. Students, parents, teachers, and others can now declare that they've prospered through a pandemic and have met one of the greatest challenges given to us. Many have encountered unsettling losses as a result of health complications, gun violence, mental health challenges, a lack of socialization, and the absence of a figure worth looking up to. We must recognize the accomplishments of all of our students while also acknowledging that some of the youth who are used to entering our school and classroom doors have found themselves in desperate situations. With all that is behind us, we can say that we've learned how to turn our mistakes into messages, losses into lessons, and barriers into blessings. Although this academic year, students have had limits on the method of their education, there is no limit to your excellence, accomplishments, and ingenuity. In life, some will doubt you, others will talk about you, and few will target you, but as long as you have a destination and a functioning engine, the talk will be silenced by the evidence of your prosperity. Even in tumultuous times, Portsmouth scholars have found themselves exceeding expectations and raising the standard for the next generation. No one could claim success without the consistent encouragement and development offered to us by an educator. They have given their all at home, in the classroom, with a mask on, and while taking care of their own families. The perseverance, innovation, and compassion that teachers have demonstrated this year is matchless. If the youth were able to make it through this past year, I'm confident that they can overcome any obstacle. The last thing that I would like to share with a young person who may come across this meeting is that despite times getting rough or life seeming hopeless, it is best to know that your condition is not your conclusion. It's been a pleasure to serve, and I'm delighted to pass this task over to the next representative. Thank you.
All right. Hang on, Miles. This is officially your last meeting, and we have something as a board to present to you. I'm going to come over and give you this plaque, but it says, "In recognition of your outstanding service presented to Miles S. Hunt, and appreciation for your tireless dedication to Portsmouth Public Schools as school board student representative during your 2020-21 senior year at Churchland High School." And it's signed by the Honorable Members of Portsmouth School Board and Dr. Eli Bracy III, our division superintendent, dated Thursday, June 24th, 2021. Thank you for your service, Miles. You were an amazing board member. You have set the bar high, and I know you're going to do great things on the next level. So I offer any board members any opportunities if they want to say some final words to Miles before I present the award.
I think we need to stand for... Congratulations.
Miles, I'm sure everybody wants to say something. They just wanted me to get it started. But, you know, we already had our exchange prior to the board meeting, so we know you'll be attending Howard University in the fall, and as I shared with you, I'll be in that area for a conference in October, so I will connect with you. And like I always wanted when I saw someone from home, all I wanted to do was go out to a decent restaurant and get something to eat. So we'll do that, and Mom has already given me permission to do it. So best of luck in the future.
Thank you so much.
And Mr. Hunt, I just want to say congratulations on your recent graduation, your acceptance at Howard, and I just know that there's so many much more great things we're going to see from you. I've just been impressed as a new board member just with your poise, your speaking, your dedication, so thank you. It's been an honor to watch you serve in this position.
Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Miles, I'd just like to say you have truly left a mark with us and the students that have come through since we started the student rep program have been really exceptional, and you have been at the top of the game. So I certainly wish you the best of luck. I know we will hear great things about Miles in the future, so I wish you Godspeed at Howard University.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Any others?
I just also want to congratulate you on your acceptance to Howard University, a great university, and as everyone else has said, we expect great things from you in the near future. And my niece will be there in the fall as a freshman as well, Alexis LaRosa Lear, so maybe you'll run into her.
Of course. Thank you, Dr. Whitaker.
Thank you, Miles.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item 6.2 is a special recognition for our students. I'm going to start with having Board Member Tillich to read our first special recognition.
All right. So we're at the place of our agenda where we will honor some of our students who have achieved some amazing feats this year. First, we have Sanya Bamberg, who is a 2021 graduate of Wilson High School, who will be continuing her studies at the renowned Juilliard School. And while that alone is impressive enough, tonight, because of her hard work and dedication, she's been offered over $630,000 worth of scholarships as she has been applying to colleges and universities, including Juilliard, University of Rochester, and John Hopkins University. Congratulations, Sanya, and we look forward to tracking your success in the future.
Also here with us tonight is Trinity Allen, a 2021 graduate of IC Norcombe High School. Trinity has been named the Youth Poet Laureate Ambassador for the city of Portsmouth and a runner-up in the Hampton Roads Youth Poet Laureate Contest. With this recognition, Allen joins a national cohort for youth poet laureate programs. Trinity was a dual enrollment senior, also attending Tidewater Community College as an early college scholar, where she graduated in May with her associate's degree in social science. And for anyone who watched the Norcombe graduation Saturday, you heard her talents firsthand with her original piece, Authors of Our Generation. Congratulations, Trinity.
Next, we have Leila Jones, a rising eighth grader at Churchland Middle School. Leila came in second place in the National Parent Teacher Association Reflections Competition in the middle school literature category. Leila wrote an essay, excuse me, based on this year's theme, "I Matter Because." To compete at the national level, Leila won first place in the local council, district, and state competitions. Being placed as second in the nation, Leila received a $200 Young Audience Scholarship, a silver medal, certificate of excellence, and her work will be featured in the National PTA competition. Congratulations, Leila.
All right, our last recognitions. Finally, tonight, we have a group of student athletes with us. Due to the complicated scheduling required because of the pandemic, the state championships for track and field were scheduled for the same day as our graduations, which meant some of our student athletes had to choose whether to compete or whether to walk across the stage for graduation. The students here with us tonight elected to take part in graduation and not compete in the state championships. We wanted to honor their athletic endeavors and their hard work because you are champions in our book. Tonight, we have Kay Bynum. Shot put. Okay. Samora Robinson, 100-meter hurdles. Samaya Robinson, pole vault. Shemaya Rufus, the 4x4 millimeter relay. Zaria Shaw for the high jump, triple jump, 100-meter hurdles, and 4x4 meter relay. And then we have Neveah Thompson for the discus throw. Okay. And their places today because they could not make it, we have the track coach, Coach Allen, B. Allen. So if you want to say something on their behalf, you can, and I will give the awards to you to give to the students.
Greetings. First, thank you, school board, for giving that recognition. These student athletes competed in probably one of the worst situations that we could think of in a pandemic. They lost their spring season from 2020, and then they lost their winter season from 2021, and so with just this season to compete, these young ladies went out there and they gave it their all. And they did so well that they did something that has not been done in a really long time at Woodrow Wilson. They brought home the Region Runner-Rod Trophy for 4A. So them young ladies, they went out there in their final season in a pandemic, and they showed out for the city of Portsmouth, and I'm so proud of them. Some of them, right now, tonight, are competing in the summit, shot put, a thrower's summit and a jump summit currently right now, so that's why some of them couldn't be here tonight, but they want to send their thanks for this recognition, and I want to thank you all for this recognition as well. In fact, I think Shemaya Rufus just arrived. She's right there. And that's Shemaya's mom. She's been a big supporter, so I got to thank mom back there. She's been a great supporter.
Mr. Allen, if you could do me a favor and have her come up, I just want her to speak about her experience because, like you said, this has been a challenge for athletes throughout the pandemic, so since she's here...
Hello.
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 During the pandemic, it definitely was hard. Starting out, we missed around two seasons, and the last season that we had, it was cut short, but through all the coaches' very encouraging words, it made it much better. And even though it was our senior year, we still went out with a bang, and we just worked hard and tried to make the best out of all the situations.
Thank you. Agenda item 6.3 is a roll call vote for our student representative and alternate to our school, alternate to our student school board. Student Representative Janari Davis, alternate Arianna Smith. Do I have a motion for approval? Move for approval.
Second.
Roll call. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Parent.
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas.
Yes.
Mr. Tillich.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
All right. Thank you. And we do have them present today. If you guys can both come up, Janari Davis and Arianna Smith. Myself and Cardale had the pleasure of interviewing these amazing students, and I just would like you guys to just give a brief synopsis to the board members of your plans and your platform that you gave to us because you guys, I mean, I thought you guys were running for official office the way you interviewed. Arianna, if you want to go first, and then we'll have Janari next.
Good evening. I just want to thank the school board for allowing me to interview with you guys. This position is amazing. Not a whole lot of people get this opportunity, so I'm just thankful for you guys to give me the best senior year possible. The interview process was stressful, but I just want to thank you guys for interviewing me. It went by smoothly and hope to have a good senior year.
All right. Thank you.
So Arianna said everything that I had to say. I look forward to serving the students of Portsmouth Public Schools. I remember telling the board in 2018 that I want to be a student representative. That was my goal. My main focus is serving students, making sure students have a voice in Portsmouth Public Schools and around the country. So I look forward to giving the students a voice and listening to their ideas so we can make Portsmouth Public Schools a better place, with Arianna.
All right. Awesome. Amazing. We look forward to both of you serving, and thank you for both coming out tonight. You've got a lot of work to do. Agenda item 6.4 is the monthly curriculum and instruction report. Dr. Wen?
Good evening, Vice Chair Atkinson, members of the board, Dr. Bracy. It is always exciting, and this year we have, we're ending the school year with a lot of exciting news from the Office of Curriculum Instruction, and I also want to take a moment just to recognize and show appreciation for our wonderful staff, our teachers, our administrators, bus drivers, cafeteria workers. Everyone who is part of the Portsmouth team has done an outstanding job this year. We really pulled together through this very difficult and We really pulled together through this very difficult and challenging time and provided quality instruction to our students, developed a virtual plan out of something that we'd never done before. And I just want to commend our staff for that and let them know how much we truly appreciate them from the Office of Curriculum Instruction. Tonight, we have our Career and Technical Education Report and Dual Enrollment, and Mr. Craig Hill is here to provide that for us.
Mr. Hill?
Good afternoon, Vice Chair Atkinson and School Board members and Superintendent Dr. Bracy. What a year. There is no need to recap all the challenges we experienced during this pandemic. We will let historians write the story. However, what I would like to do tonight is share with you some of the successes in career and technical education and dual enrollment this past year. CTE programs provide learning environments of student-centered classrooms, labs, and on-the-job training. Even though this past year was filled with uncharted territory and different platforms, our teachers worked hard to maintain a quality education for our students. Please allow me to take this moment to thank all the CTE teachers. They overcame the challenges of a pandemic to carry out their mission in preparing our students for meaningful and productive careers. Tonight, let's celebrate some of our achievements in CTE and DE programs. Nothing else reflects the struggles from the pandemic like the CNA program. The pandemic hit CTE healthcare programs the hardest. The biggest challenge was finding healthcare locations for students to meet clinical requirements. Trust me, there was no stone unturned. Working with our partner, Autumn Care, CNA students returned to clinical rotations in May. Safety was our main concern for our students and the residents, and they were tested two to three times a week. These students that you see up here chose to get the vaccine because healthcare is the industry they want to go into, and they felt the concern and need to do so. This summer, we will also run a session from June 28th through July 15th to enable fall and spring students to complete the clinical portion of the course to satisfy state requirements. Additionally, before the pandemic, our CTE advisory board was putting in place a Phase Two work-based component that would provide CNA students with paid internships, collaborating with partners we hope to do, to be on track next school year to implement. I'm excited to report, we had four welding students successfully complete the Career Studies Certificate pathway. In all, we had 20 welding students that attended labs at TCC back in the fall and the spring. I would like to thank the school board for recognizing the IC NORC with JRTC last month. What an accomplishment to be the first-place winners of the National Academic Exam in 2021 was amazing. One out of 1,338 teams, they were number one. Let's remember that the JRTC plays an important role with career and technical education. We like to say when you graduate with the CTE program, you're either enrolled, you're either employed, or you're enlisted. And this is a big part of that stage right here. Next, let's focus attention on a program developed this past year. The goal was to generate interest in green and sustainable landscaping careers through next-generation pathways. The partners was Paradise Creek National Park, ourselves, and also the Hampton Roads Workforce Council. The two students you see in the middle, Justin Green and Thomas Jones, are the first students in Virginia to earn Chesapeake Bay Landscaping Professional Associate Certification. Not Portsmouth, not Chesapeake, not Virginia Beach, but in Virginia. And that's a quite a big honor that I hope you will recognize. They also received paid internship in this program. They will also receive mentorship with Career Pathway Coach. They also got job training. Our teacher in the horticulture also completed her Associate Certificate Program, so we can move forward and offer this some more. So this was an exciting year for us. This was happening, and people didn't even realize it was happening during a pandemic. The next one. We're excited to be one of three school divisions to win the Claude Moore Scholars Grant. A lot of people are not familiar with this grant because it's up northern Virginia for the most part. They reached out to the Hampton Roads area. The Claude Moore Scholars Program provides local school systems with grant funds to establish healthcare education programs for high school students that will most, that will meet local, regional, and statewide workforce needs. The partners, Portsmouth Public Schools, Hampton Roads Workforce Council, Next Gen Healthcare. The initiative will serve our community by providing critical skills to expand the talent pipeline in healthcare industry. Claude Moore Scholars Grant, the need, we know the need. The healthcare industry is very short with their workers. They need CNA workers, they need nurses, they need everything. And all of the area hospitals came together and realized this and got on board from the get-go. The target population, the Next Gen Healthcare Pipeline, programs for high school students in Chesapeake, Portsmouth, and Isle of Wight County Public Schools. The impact will increase the capacity of nursing, pharmacy tech, and a new CT track and patient care technician. The grant will provide staff, I will repeat, staff, equipment, paid internships, I will repeat, paid internships, job shattering, hands-on training, and job interviews. What more can you ask for? We are going to roll this plan out this year and come up with how we want to implement it with the needs of Portsmouth in mind, not Norfolk, not Chesapeake, not Virginia Beach, not Fairfax, Portsmouth. And in 2022, 23, we will implement it by hiring a teacher, hopefully in the CNA program that will help increase the numbers in that program. And then finally, with the Claude Moore Scholars, this grant will provide certifications and career pathways for our students. Our next slide, Next Gen Aviators. These next two slides, you will almost be able to hear Frank Sinatra sing, Come Fly With Me, if you listen carefully. What we had was Dynamic Aviation decided to want to partner with Portsmouth Public Schools. So they were based out of Bridgewater, Virginia. They said that they would offer students a two-and-a-half fully interactive experience at local airports. Opportunities, exposure to the aviation career pathway at an early age, host an interactive field trip at local airports for grade eight yearly, which we would run out of our career exploration class, and they will also increase interest in aviation and other relative careers, identify and align core SOL and Next Gen activities for grades nine through 12. Dynamic Aviation flew down from Bridgewater, Virginia, picked up some of our teachers and a guidance counselor, took them back, and these teachers experienced, as you can see, hands-on simulation, hands-on activities, training in aviation. And if our eighth graders are half as excited as these teachers were when they came back, we got a winner. And I think this will show a lot. And just, just knowing that these teachers were that excited and a guidance counselor, and they will spread that word, I think we've got, like I said, a winner there. Now let's switch gears. Dual enrollment had some challenges too. Seeing and having students sign in every day with my office is hard to replace with a Zoom, especially when being on the ground with students as they bridge the gap from high school to college is so important. However, with these obvious obstacles, we had many highlights. First of all, I'd like to show you this slide. Early college, students participating in early college. If you notice, 2018, we had 84. 2019, 20, we had 67. And this past year, we had 102 students graduate out of the early college program. I consider that a great achievement to reach the 100 mark. Also remember, this is that ninth-grade cohort that started back four years ago, and they stuck with it. They were veteran dual enrollment students, and it showed. If you look down at the GPA, 4.0, 42 of the 102 students had a 4.0 GPA. I think we just saw a couple of the students come up here and get awards. So that is very impressive, and I think the program is just skyrocketing and continuing to go. Our next program is the first college program. Obviously, the pandemic hurt us. The numbers went down. If you notice on there, the total enrollment for 2020 was 164. Remember what happened back in 2020 when we closed out in March, on the 13th, and those students kind of left that situation. Also remember that TCC changed the grading policy at that time. A C minus or above, you got a P plus. A D, you got a P minus. And if you didn't attend, or you got an F, you got a W. So that hit our numbers. That's why the numbers show 164. This year, we had 151 students drop, complete the program. We had a lot of students that decided, and we can all relate, that the pandemic was too much for them. Also, remember, first college is for seniors that have graduated basically and met all the requirements to January of their senior year. So this, they come over to gain this experience. So a lot of them decided with the pandemic, it was too stressful to do it, and we can understand that. They also, the numbers in early college went up. So as those numbers go up, we figured that first college may would go down some. And then thirdly, you remember, back again at the end of 2020, we were not in the schools in April and May to be able to gain those students and make sure they were continuing on in that first college. So we lost a little bit of a window there. We feel like these numbers will increase back post-pandemic days. I can't think of a better way to end a presentation than with these next two slides. The Governor's Medallion recipients. We all know what that means, students graduating with an Associate's Degree. An Associate's Degree in May of their senior year before they grab their high school diploma. When you just sit back and think about that for just a moment, that's an amazing accomplishment on its own. You look back in 2019, we had six students. 2020, we had 11. This year, we had 20. And I want to put it in a little bit of perspective. It's not to dig anybody, but I just want to give a little perspective. Chesapeake, what did we look at? They've got 12 students that graduated with the Governor's Medallion. Think they have a few more students in a few more high schools. Virginia Beach had 23, and I will remind you in yellow, we had 20. I will put Portsmouth Public Schools in front of anybody. I also will note that if you want to know how successful early college has been since it's been implemented, that number 20 is a snapshot. So keep that in mind. And then this next slide, here's a few faces of some of the students that came through that program, and we're excited for them. And there's 20 pictures that could have been up there. We just picked these, but we think that these students are going to go on and be big and do great things. And then finally, I'm going back to the Dynamic Aviation. One of our teachers took this picture outside the window of the airplane, so I felt like it's appropriate for me to put this up here. Career and Technical Education and Dual Enrollment continues to soar above the clouds, and we will continue to do that in the future. And thank you for your support and everything that you do.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. As you said, we will continue to soar with our CTE. We're all passionate about CTE. We're looking forward to more course offerings. We're excited about when we were at graduation, all the students that received their Associate's Degree. So to see that we're only three behind Virginia Beach and ahead of Chesapeake with more schools, that speaks volumes. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
And thank you, Dr. Nguyen, for that report. Agenda item 6.5 is Discussion of the Code of Student Conduct Handbook for Years 2021 to 2022. Board members, this was uploaded in the board docs. You had a chance to review it. Any questions or any discussion? Not seeing any. Agenda item 6.6 is a roll call vote, and that's Consideration to Remove the English Grade Level Promotion Requirement for High School. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion from Mr. Parent and a second by Mr. Williams. Any discussion? I'm sorry, Mrs. Williams. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillich?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mrs. Atkinson?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Agenda item 6.7 is a roll call vote for Consideration to Approve the Transgender Student Model Policies. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve by Board Member Yolanda Edmonds, and then the second by Mrs. Williams. Roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Parent?
I'm sorry, Madam Clerk. Do we have any discussion?
Discussion. Thank you. Yes.
Mr. Parent?
I want the, I want the board to know that while I am not opposed to providing accommodations for transgender students, these transgender model policies as presented by the Virginia Department of Education do not reflect my religious beliefs based on scripture and God's Word. Therefore, I will be voting as a board member, no. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parent. Any other board members?
I just want to speak regarding this policy as a board member. I think with the approval of this, we are aligned with VSBA. I think as a board member, myself personally, when I took this role in office, it was my duty to make sure all students have a safe haven and a safe place. So with this, after reviewing the policy, I feel like our school system, regardless of the vote, we continue to lead the way with providing diversity and inclusion, not just among our staff, but our students as well. So hopefully, we can be the model board and again, lead the way and continue to shine. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Parent?
No.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillich?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
We have five yes, one no.
Thank you.
Agenda item 6.8 is a roll call vote for Consideration of Proposed Changes to the Superintendent's Contract.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Parent, second by Ms. Williams. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillich?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Agenda item 7.1 is the monthly report from Superintendent Dr. Bracy. Dr. Bracy?
Good evening, Vice Chair Atkinson and members of the board. I'm here tonight to give my last superintendent's report for the 2020-21 school year. And what better way to end this than reminiscent about the events this past weekend? Saturday, June 19th, we held graduation ceremonies for each of our high schools at Chartway Arena at Old Dominion University. It was an incredible day to watch the class of 2021 cross that stage and receive their well-earned diplomas. And let me just say, that could have went another way because it was a 90-degree day, and we originally were scheduled to be outside. But I'm thankful that we were indoors, and I'm sure my fellow colleagues and board members are for that matter. But I definitely want to thank Old Dominion for working with us to make the changes as the governor began to loosen some of the restrictions. And I also want to thank the school principals, counselors, and administrative teams for their work in creating a memorable graduation ceremony for our students, families, and guests. Also, if you haven't, we have videos, full videos, available for those ceremonies on the division's Facebook page and YouTube channel. Ahead of graduations, we had our last day of school on Thursday, June 17th. As I shared with staff in an email that day, this year, as was, as already been mentioned, was like none other than before. You know, our staff members, they, they did a remarkable job in, to make this year successful. You know, they did this work in midst of a global crisis, and I'm proud of all our employees in these efforts. I'm also thankful for our students and families, for their patience and flexibility for us throughout this year and for helping us make this year a success. You all know that Portsmouth Public Schools was one of the last school divisions to return to the hybrid model in person, and that's because we wanted to make sure that we had it right before we brought students and staff back into our, our buildings. And continuing my thanks, I also want to acknowledge our student representative again, Mr. Miles Hunt. Miles, what a year for you to serve, you know, through a pandemic, but you made the most of it, and you rec, you rec, you definitely. you definitely was representative to your fellow students from the secondary level to the elementary level. So we thank you for your service once again. As has already been said, you know, we're going to miss you. I think Janari, he's still here. So Janari, you know you have some big shoes to fill, but you've been watching us do this for the past three years. So we have high expectations of you as well. But Miles, thank you for what you've done, and we know we're going to see big things from you in the future. So finally, tonight, I do want to remind families that our schools are official on the summer schedule. So we will be in four days a week. We'll be doing four 10-hour days, and we will be off on Fridays. So for those that need to come to the school for registration or any other business, you need to make sure that you make a note of that because we don't want you to show up and no one's there to let you in. And before I close, members of the board, I want to thank you for your vote of confidence in the extension of my contract. I'm enjoying serving the families and communities of Portsmouth, and I look forward to doing so in the foreseeable future. So thank you, Vice Chair Atkinson. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Bracy. You almost scared me for a second when you said this is your last report. I thought she was about to exit. I was like, wait a minute. Agenda item 7.2 is board members' comments. Any comments? Ms. Williams?
I'd like to piggyback on what Dr. Bracy and Dr. Nguyen said earlier about thanking all the staff because it has been a very trying, difficult situation. And I think Portsmouth Public Schools rose to the occasion. Like Dr. Nguyen said, the online learning was new for everyone, but I think we got through it without a lot of terrible anxiety and whatever. And I think, I think the teachers did a good job of trying to keep the kids on pace. I know my granddaughter, she took the SOLs in geometry. She passed. So I do feel like she was learning something, sitting there watching online. And I just appreciate everyone, the bus drivers, the cafeteria workers, the teachers, everyone that takes part in getting our students to school and learning. And sometimes you sit and you don't hear the positive things about Portsmouth Public Schools. Well, I hear a lot of positive things in the community because, believe me, they don't mind calling us up when it's not working right. And I do appreciate Dr. Bracy. He was named one of the Superintendents of the Year. It's well-deserved. Portsmouth is fortunate to have him. That's my only sad part about leaving this board is leaving Dr. Bracy. But I'm going to continue to keep up with him and the rest of you all. And I just want to say thank you to everyone for all that you've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Mr. Parent?
Yes, I'd like to echo everything that Mrs. Williams has said. I think she captured our thoughts, and this has been a trying year. It's been a trying year for our staff. It's been a trying year for our students, and it certainly has been a trying year for our parents. We've done an outstanding job because we have fed students, we have educated students. We've done all of the things that are required of us, and we've gone above and beyond. And I want to thank personally our staff for their hard work and their dedicated service because education is the foundation of really freedom. And unless you have an education, you really don't have freedom. So congratulations to the staff and to Dr. Bracy. I remember meeting you and Mr. Bridgert somewhere between, somewhere in a gas station somewhere in North Carolina, negotiate your contract. And I want to tell you that I am very proud to have been part of that, and you are well-deserved of an extension of your contract, and congratulations. And although I have this year and next year, I look forward to working with you and finishing my term. God bless you and thank you for all you do.
Board Member Thomas?
I'm going to keep this short and sweet, but I just want to say thank you as a new board member. Thank you to all the staff, Dr. Bracy, your whole team. Thank you all. As a new board member, it's a lot to often learn and learn the lay of the land, learn how things work. So I feel like, you know, the short five months coming in during the pandemic, working to get children back in school safely, working to get teachers back in school safely, that was our number one, I think, goal, and I'm glad we accomplished it. And also seeing those students graduate and walk across the stage this weekend was really a true highlight. And so on top of just saying thank you, I also want to say let's work. We're back fully open, and I'm looking forward to all of us really being able to work hard and implement the things that we promised to the community to make the school system the best that it could be in top order. So thank you.
Dr. Whitaker?
To Dr. Bracy, I just want to thank you for your excellent leadership before the pandemic, during the pandemic, and I know you will continue to lead in an excellent way. And I also just want to say that, you know, it's not easy being at the helm of the ship because that's a great responsibility, and as they say, the buck stops with you. But I just thank you for being a leader who always has an open mind and an open ear and will work on tasks to get things done. And so I look forward to working with you again in the upcoming years.
Mr. Tillich?
Yes, I also want to echo a lot of the sentiments that my fellow board members have said up here as well. I want to thank all the staff of Portsmouth Public Schools. This school year has definitely not been the easiest. It's definitely been one for the books, and it's hard to believe that I'm already six months into my first term. I look forward to the next three and a half years that I have to serve on the school board. And I want to thank and congratulate the students who persevered through this pandemic and were still able to graduate, graduate with honors, to graduate with associate's degrees. The list goes on. Portsmouth often gets a lot of bad publicity on the news. They only want to show up when we have controversial things going on. However, Portsmouth has a lot to offer our students. I am a proud of Portsmouth Public Schools First College, and I just want to congratulate and thank Dr. Bracy and his staff. And I look forward to the 2021-2022 school year as we continue to take Portsmouth Public Schools to new heights.
Thank you. Again, thank you to our staff. Thank you, Dr. Bracy and team. Congratulations to our students. You overcame a trying year. Hopefully, we don't have to revisit school reopening. I do hear in the news that the COVID pandemic is supposed to be back again. So hopefully, that doesn't affect us. Let's pray that all away. But again, thank you again, Miles. And I know our next student reps, they will do great as well. And happy summer to all of our staff. We look forward to next school year. Next item is for adjournment. Oh, can we? Ms. Williams, clapping up for our staff and Dr. Bracy and his team. Thank you, guys, for an amazing year. Next item is for adjournment. Do we have a motion?
Move motion to adjourn.
Alrighty, thank you.
Do say.